All right, let's call to order this committee the whole Thursday, May 15th at 6:31 PM. And I would like a roll call, please.
Rosales?
Here.
Schrader? Schwartz?
Here.
Alex?
Here.
Burksen?
Here.
Carter? Coort?
Present.
Esri?
Here.
Harper?
Here.
Hartke?
Here.
James?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Kibler?
Here.
Langenheim?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
McGuire?
Present.
Michaels?
Here.
Mitchell? Petrie?
Here.
Quisenberry?
Here.
Richards?
Present.
Kurtz?
Here. We have a quorum, thank you. I'd like a motion for approval of the minutes, April 15th, 2014, please.
So moved.
So moved by Aaron. What do I have a first by?
Hartke.
Hartke, second by Aaron. We have a change of the agenda. Please remove the closed, what's that on the?
Point of order, you need to vote.
Oh, I'm on the minutes. Of course I am. Any changes, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda and addendum, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Moved by Stan, second by Jeff. And discussion coming forth, please eliminate the, on the addendum, the closed session. We will not have a closed session this evening. Are there any other changes or add to the agenda? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public participation, I have one, Mr. Robert Michael Doyle, please.
I'm Robert Michael Doyle, live at 105 East Green, City of Champaign. This is my third appearance before you on the same issue, which is the proclamation, which is on your agenda in the addendum. The proclamation has been retitled and rewritten with the help of a couple of the board members. I really want to say that I think they really improved it immensely, and I'm in favor of the entire, all the changes. And for the benefit of the public, I will read the text as it is before you now. The title is, "Respect and Celebrate Marriage Equality." Whereas, marriage of two people farms the base of the family unit and helps to build a cohesive and successful society; and whereas, the county of Champaign has been issuing marriage licenses to all couples since March of 2014; and whereas, on June 2nd, 2014, marriage licenses will be available equally to all couples in all 102 counties of the state of Illinois; and whereas, on June 2nd, 2014, all couples joined by civil unions may at no cost for one year have their unions changed to marriages dated from the day of their civil union ceremonies; and whereas, all forms of legal marriage may be beneficial to the people being raised by loving couples as well as to the people of the state of Illinois and Champaign County. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Champaign County Board that the month of June 2014 is designated as Respect and Celebrate Marriage Equality Month in the county of Champaign, Illinois. End of the reading. For the public, I want to point out, you may have noticed there is no mention of gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgendered, or no mention of same-sex unions. But the text clearly includes them. And the marriage equality name is the name used by our lobbyists and all our supporters to both get same-sex marriage here and to get it throughout the United States, which I am sure we will have in a few years' time, if not sooner. So I urge the county board to vote for this tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bobby Trist?
It's a sparse field tonight, huh? Does this go up?
Yeah. Pull that down. There's a lever right. You have to pull up on that lever right side.
Down.
Down. Push down a little bit.
Oh, here we go.
I won't get that against your brother.
Yeah, thank you. So my chin isn't on the table. All right, my name is Bobby Trist, and I've come before you many times. And I'm here to talk about the issue of jail construction and the RFQ. And some of you may remember that I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I have experience in mental health going back 50 years. When I worked as a college student at Elgin State Hospital for the summer, and that was when the big warehouse institutions were de rigueur. So I have some concerns about the RFQ that was recently initiated by the county board, which would explore building new facilities for our county criminal justice system. The county spent a lot of time, effort, and money to have the consultant come and examine our system and suggest ways which we could streamline, reduce our census, and thus eliminate the need for new construction. Some of his suggestions and those of the Criminal Justice Task Force have been implemented and some have not. But in any case, the new systems have not really had enough time for us to see how much impact they are going to have on the census. We need to give the new procedures time to have a cumulative effect, and this has been less than a year. So I would like to ask that the board give this more time to see how much of this shakes down. Those of us who've been working on the issue for over two years are concerned that the RFQ is moving at a very fast pace. The process needs to be slowed down enough to ensure that there is effective and meaningful public participation. This RFQ could potentially spend millions of taxpayer dollars, and that's something that needs due deliberation. New construction is very costly and uses money that might otherwise be spent for programs that could get much more bang for the buck. We're also concerned that the RFQ is narrow in focus. We need to look at the buildings that the county, all the buildings that the county already owns, to see if some of them could be repurposed, not only for incarceration, but for office space, storage space, perhaps a reporting center, and other programs. We need space for jail alternatives for those with low-level offenses such as traffic violations, low amounts of drug possession, or ordinance violations. And also, not all the people that are in the jail now, it's my understanding, are in need of maximum security. They could, some of them could go with minimum or medium. And we're especially concerned, of course, about those with mental health issues. Our top priorities should be to support a community facility that can take folks 24/7 where crisis intervention and treatment are available. Building an expensive mental health facility behind bars is not the answer. We need to have a facility, and it's more expensive to build it behind bars than outside. It's been expressed to me that we don't know if we can maintain the upkeep of a 24/7 facility. But it takes more upkeep to build it behind bars than it does in the community. Most people with mental illness do not need to be isolated. In most cases, that just makes the situation worse. In spite of the occasional violent mentally ill person, most mentally ill people are more afraid of you than you of them. As I said, I worked in the big warehouse facilities in the '60s and can tell you from experience that this is true. And I don't, I made visits at Ypsilanti, I was at Elgin for three months, I worked in other facilities in Germany. And I worked on a research project in Michigan. Germany was in the '70s, so Michigan and Illinois were in the '60s. And I never was threatened or attacked, and I was walking unarmed by myself on closed wards, open wards around the grounds. So for the most part, also, this was before psychotropic meds. So people, they were just coming in when I was working in Michigan and Illinois. And in any case, it's much cheaper to treat people than it is to lock them up.
That's five minutes.
All right. I know you want what's best for people, so please give this point of view due consideration.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to participate in public participation? Seeing none, closing. Public participation communications, anyone on the floor? I have two exciting, one really exciting and one very exciting, two very exciting communications. The first one is from the Administration for Children and Family Services, the United States Government. On April 6th, 2014 to April 10th, 2014, the Administration for Children and Family Services conducted one of their first three-year monitoring review of the Champaign County Head Start and Early Head Start programs. We wish to thank the governing body, policy council, staff, and parents of your program for their cooperation and assistance during the review. The Head Start review report has been issued to Mr. Alan Kurtz, board chairperson, as legal notice to your agency of the results on the onsite program review. Based on the information gathered, no area of noncompliance was found during the course of the review. Accordingly, no corrective action is required at this time. There wasn't one finding in our entire program run by RPC and Kathleen Lefrick and her staff. I have to congratulate them. This is an extensive review audit by seven very highly experienced federal government auditors who came in, and I watched them work, and they literally tore the program apart. I saw the dimwit room covered with papers and books that they were, they were moving through, financials and audits and child welfare. And I can only tell you that to not have one finding is extraordinary, at least, on this kind of an audit. So I want to congratulate Kathleen and RPC and their entire staff for this work. Second, I received this just moments ago before our meeting from the governor of Illinois, to Gina McCarthy, I won't read the whole letter, just a couple of excerpts here and then have it for the record. It's great news. Gina McCarthy, Administrator, this is a letter to her of the U.S. EPA headquarters in Washington, D.C. Dear Administrator McCarthy, I am writing to urge you to deny the Peoria Disposal Company's request for authorization to dispose of toxic waste in the new cell at the Clinton Landfill in DeWitt, Illinois. It goes on to talk about the documented risks and everything, and I'll give you the last paragraph here. Based on these documented risks, I join Senators Dick Durbin, Mark Kirk, the mayors of the community served by the Mohammed Valley Aquifer, and the extensive and diverse group of Illinois residents in urging the U.S. EPA to deny Peoria Disposal Company's request for authorization to dispose of PCBs at the Clinton Landfill. Thank you for your careful consideration of this matter of considerable importance to the people of Illinois. Sincerely, Pat Quinn, Governor. I'd like to now ask the governor and request him to call the Illinois EPA, people who work for him, to have them withdraw their already approved permit for the dumping of PCBs at the Clinton Landfill. I request that of the governor, and I will ask a letter to be sent with this, hopefully with the backing of this county board body, to the governor for that request. Thank you, Governor Quinn, for this next step in the process of preventing the Mohammed Aqua from being polluted with PCBs. Ms. Petrie.
Yes, I'm sure some others who attended the Leadership Academy got a message from Rick Winkle asking us to let our fellow county board members know that there are still openings in the next Leadership Academy that will be starting probably within the next month. And if you have an interest to, please contact him to register for this.
Thank you. Are there any other communications? All right, let's move on. Astrid? Justice and Social Services. You want to turn on your microphone if you want to do it from there? That's fine. It's not on. Uh-oh. Ours is not working either. Yep.
I can yell.
Yeah, use that one.
We were looking for a deferral on the hours of operation for the animal control to August so they can get more data. Anyone want to move that?
Point of order, there's no motion on the table yet to defer, so it could just be stricken.
Do I, okay. Do I move? I move we defer then?
To August.
Okay. There's a motion to defer.
The motion to defer to August.
To August. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim? All right.
And?
If you, discussion on it.
Is there any discussion? Yeah.
Just wanted to bring up what came up in our caucus, from James Quisenberry. Expressed an interest in making sure Stephanie had statistics from every day for us to look at when this comes back, not just from Saturdays. I know she's wanting to defer this, to bring the data to us, that not much is going on on Saturday, but we had several people wanting to look at it for every day and get that better in context.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the monthly reports, I move they be, yes?
I'll make a motion, I'm the motion to place them on file, receive and place them on file. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think there's any other business?
Any other business?
No.
Okay, thank you. No chairs report?
No.
Okay. Nothing on the consent agenda, except, do you want to put that, does A have to go on?
No.
No. Deferred, okay. Second is finance, Chris?
First item on the agenda is the Treasurers' report.
I love those sneakers. Never lose them in the closet.
I don't know if we can get those on camera or not, but those are impressive.
Should I put my feet up on the table?
Let the record record it, the Treasurers wearing very yellow sneakers.
I'll be very quick. Well, I wanted to report one thing, and that is, on April 30th, General Court Fund, pre-year resolution borrowed $1 million from Public Safety. It's the, what we've been doing in the last several years, I think the last year we did not borrow was 2005. So I thought we'd make it through May, frankly. We've usually been borrowing the last four years, around the 1st of April, mid to the end of April, but in this particular year, May is a three payroll month, and there was no hope for that. So anyway, we borrowed the $1 million, and we'll be able to pay that easily by the end of November. Other than that, I ask that my report be accepted and placed on file, please.
May I have a motion? Mr. Hartke and Ms. Michaels. Any discussion? Mr. Richards.
So, Mr. Treasurer, we took this out about April 30th, you're thinking it's going to be back by November 30th, so five to six month loan, probably?
Yeah, it could be earlier.
And when, so last year, the last couple of years, it's been going out about April 1st. When have we, on average, been paying that back the last two or three years?
End of November.
The end of November. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The reports will be received and placed on file. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the auditor.
My report's available on my website, and just the only thing that I've noticed was that it seemed like some of our revenues were lagging a little behind. And after also conferring with the county administrator, it appears to mostly be in payment of state money, just the way they've cycled through. So we anticipate that these will pick up, but it's just, when I went through and compared month to month and apples to apples, things seem to be about where they should be. But the state's just a little bit slow in paying things. So I ask that you accept it and place it on file.
May I have a motion to do so? So moved. Moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Kibler. Any discussion or questions for the auditor? Ms. Petrie.
With this lag, has it put any particular stress on our financial situation, or is it just a pain in the neck?
No, quite honestly, this report comes from April 30th, and we received our next set of checks from the state on May 7th. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting and placing the report on file, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We'll place that on file. Thank you, sir. Moving on to the nursing home monthly report that was provided in the packet, I would ask for a motion to accept that and place it on file. Mr. Langenheim, and seconded by Ms. Burksen. Discussion, Mr. Maxwell has a memo that also is in our, was emailed to us. If we have any questions for Mr. Hartke or Mr. Maxwell, or if they'd like to give us a brief statement, they would be welcome to do so. Mr. Hartke?
I'll, since, I'm sure everybody will find a way to get the bad news out, I, if there is any, I'll give the three pieces of real good news. One, the last quarter, we've been in the black for four months in a row, knock on for MICA. Two, we just went from two stars to three stars on our rating, which is very good, and we have a very good head of steam built up to be up to four stars possibly by October when one of our reports finally falls off the back of a reporting period, and somewhat exciting. Third note is that the ozone laundry project that's saving the county money over there is now being nominated for a Governor's Sustainability Award this month. So that's pretty good news for the nursing home. Just to jump ahead, we are currently in the middle of negotiating both MPA and labor contracts. Those are actually being coincidental at a very convenient time because we're working on some things about management levels at the nursing home, which I think Mr. Kibler has mentioned this, Ms. Petrie, that manage, a lot of our problems seem to stem from management, our problems in the dining hall, our problems with, you know, CNAs and things. It's mostly about, seems like middle management is where we're having fines, some trouble. So hopefully, and staffing. So hopefully, through this labor contract negotiation, some things are going to be in there, will help us with that, and hopefully with the MPA contract, we're considering some things that'll help us intensify the way we're able to manage problems. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to take them on.
Ms. Michaels?
I did. Okay. I didn't press hard enough. A comment, and part of that came from Mr. Maxwell's summary, and I appreciate all the work you guys do because at least I think we have a better understanding of where we're at. But I was concerned because the attendance at the compliance sessions were less than 50%, and I really would like to see that a little more. That probably has something to do with our rating as well as other things, and I'm sure you're aware of that, but just to let you know, please pass that on.
Just to answer that real quick, that's within, I think, the area of what we're trying to deal with with these management and labor things we're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Hartke. Ms. Petrie.
Just for the public watching, both of what is being worked on, the MPA contract and the labor negotiations, they synchronize nicely because these will be three-year contracts, do I understand correctly?
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Any other comments or questions related to the nursing home? Because I would just add to what Mr. Hartke said and express my thanks both to the MPA folks and to the ASME local that represents the nursing home union. My understanding is these negotiations so far have been quite cordial, and I really do feel like we have a strong partner in the union in terms of trying to do even better than the new three-star rating. So thank you to the members of the nursing home board, and thank you to everybody over And all those in favor of accepting the nursing home report and placing it on file? Aye. Any opposed? Placed on file.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll move on to budget amendments and transfers. Our first budget amendment is Budget Amendment 14-19. This is for the $44,000 transfer within the Circuit Clerk's office. I may have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Jay and Mr. Esri, any comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Budget Amendment 14-20. This is $2,450 receiving the proceeds from a maintenance contract which was terminated early for equipment that was replaced in 2013. May I have a motion for, excuse me, for the juvenile detention center? May I have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval? Ms. Michaels and Mr. Hartke, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Budget Amendment 14-21. This is a $13,125 pass-through for the Workforce Development Fund. I may have a motion to forward this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. I see Mr. Esri and Mr. McGuire. Any discussion, comments, or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And our final budget amendment, 14-22. This is a $152,809 pass-through of federal money to the RPC for the ARRA weatherization program. Hear a motion by Mr. McGuire and a second by Ms. Coort. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of sending this to the full board, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up is a request for approval of application for and awarded acceptance of the Illinois Emergency Management Agency State Disaster Assistance to Local Governments grant, which is a mouthful. I may have a motion to forward that to the full board, Mr. James and Mr. Kibler. And we have Mr. John Dwyer here from the Emergency Management Agency, if anyone has any questions. I don't know, John, do you want to speak to this at all? Let us know what you're doing on this.
Thank you for your time. What this grant is, it's for, it's for the efforts in Gifford or the efforts of the whole state that was affected by the tornado. As you all know, we did not get a federal declaration for public assistance that's for police overtime, roads, and things like that. So this is a special grant opportunity from the governor for jurisdictions to apply for reimbursement of items concerning debris management and, excuse me, emergency protective measures. The roads up in Gifford, for example, is going to be worked out with IDOT and as well as other programs, but this is mainly for category A debris removal and category B emergency protective measures. To explain a little bit more about it too as well is that there are, within Champaign County, four jurisdictions were deemed eligible, that is, the county of Champaign, Compromised Township, the city of Champaign, the village of Gifford, and the village of Longview. So the grant agreements and grant applications are with individual jurisdictions. So as of today, only Gifford, the village of Gifford, the county of Champaign, and the Compromised Township are going for this grant and for this agreement. It's a really quick turnaround. The grant will be reviewed and all the backup documentation will be turned in by June 1st. They will only reimburse up to 75% of the claims as the county, which includes County Highway, Emergency Management Agency, and Sheriff's Office, we're looking to claim probably a little over $40,000, maybe $50,000, so we would probably get back around $30,000 if it's deemed eligible. So it's, we're going to apply for everything that we can, but it's, with anything, you don't know the exact dollar amount. But there should be a real quick turnaround on the reimbursement of funds once they execute the grant funds.
Very good. Mr. Kurtz?
No, I thought Diane had her hand up.
I'm sorry. Any comments, questions? Let Ms. Petrie's next then.
Well, thank you for the effort of applying for this, for these folks. When you were briefed on the process for this application, were you able to pick up any sense of the percentage chance of the various communities or counties that will be applying for this money? Is there plenty of money that everybody can be funded to at least some extent?
I believe so, ma'am, because as of yesterday, I was beating the bushes with Gifford and Compromised Township because as of yesterday, only three jurisdictions out of 43 eligible had turned in their grant agreements and applications. So I talked to Gifford last night and as well as Compromised Township because to ensure that they got their stuff in by today.
ensure that they got their stuff in by today. And if not, they've made contact with IHEMS, so they are in line to get, or at least be eligible for those funds.
[inaudible]
Yes, ma'am. And like I said, this includes, you know, Village of Washington, Tazewell County, everybody else, but as of yesterday, only three jurisdictions have applied for this, and we're looking, as a whole, I believe, somewhere around 1.6 million that the governor has set aside.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you, sir. I know you'd be out there after disaster, whether you're getting reimbursed for it or not, but it's always nice to have the state willing to help out on that, so we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you for your time.
All in favor of sending this to the full board with a recommendation for approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And finally, an item from the state's attorney, they are requesting approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the Champaign County State's Attorney's Office. May I have a recommendation to forward this to the full board?
So moved.
With a recommendation for approval. Moved by Mr. Kurtz, seconded by Mr. Kibler. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to the county administrator, who has the General Corporate Fund Fiscal Year 2014 budget projection and budget change reports on your desk.
The report continues to indicate that we should be fairly stable for the General Corporate Fund for fiscal 2014. Couple highlights, the 1% sales tax in the unincorporated areas is coming in at about 18% over last year, and the general sales tax, the quarter cents, are both coming in fairly flat, as opposed to last year. So you'll see, there's a deficit indicated on the quarter cent sales tax, because we projected it with 2% growth. We'll see how that goes. The most significant item that is off-budget is the general government fees. If you'll remember, you increased recorder, sheriff, and county clerk fees last year for this year, and those fees are coming in as projected. But the criminal justice system fees are coming in slower, and quite frankly, they came in slower last year, and we didn't fully realize that when this budget was projected. So if there's a shortfall, it's probably in the fact that we have overprojected the fees that are collected through the court system. Overall, right now, it looks like we would achieve 100% of our revenue as budgeted. On expenditures, right now, it looks like we'll underspend just about everything except gas, and that's because of the winter that we had. So hopefully, that will equalize a little bit over the balance of the fiscal year. So, looking at the summary, right now, based on the projection, we would end at about a $472,000 deficit, and remember, the original budget was for an almost million-dollar deficit because of the 13-month fiscal year. So that would be a fairly positive outcome if we, if we ended up there. We'll see. And then the budget change report is on the last page, and just shows all the changes you've made to, you've made to the general corporate budget for this year since it began.
Thank you, Ms. Bucy. May I have a request, may I have a motion to receive the reports and place them on file, Mr. James and Mr. Jay? Any, a little slower, Mr. Langenheim. Any questions, comments, discussion? I think that's good news, as always. There's a lot of fiscal year left, so we'll stay on top of it and make whatever changes we need to make. Ms. Schwartz?
Just briefly, what is medical services?
That's primarily the medical services in the two adult detention facilities and the juvenile detention center.
Any other questions, clarifications? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, it's budget time again. We have in your packet the Fiscal Year 2015 Budget Process Resolution. I would like to ask for a motion to accept that and forward it to the full board. Mr., I'm sorry, who is the, Mr. Harper. Harkey and Kibler, sorry. One of those guys, Harkey and Kibler. Any discussion? Ms. Bucy, did you want to say anything about this? This is roughly similar to what we filed last year, with the one addition.
Yeah, it is substantially similar, adding the public hearing towards the end of the process before final documents are developed. I would just encourage all of you to make sure and look at the section on page 76, which is instructions to general corporate fund departments about the parameters that they need to adhere to in preparing their budgets, to make sure it, it is consistent with what we've done the last two years, just make sure that it still meets your expectations for how they prepare their budgets.
Ms. Petrie.
Yes, I want to thank both Ms. Bucy and Mr. Alex for integrating one more step to allow the public to have a comment period on the budget. We made a small step last year, and we're making one more incremental step, so that's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. We certainly look forward to seeing how it goes. Any additional comments or questions on the Budget Process Resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. And finally, you'll have a copy of the fiscal policies in our packet, and I would like to ask for a motion to send this to the full board with a recommendation for approval. It will be in resolution form at the full board meeting. I see Mr. Rosales and Mr. Harkey. Just to clarify, there's nothing new in these that we haven't already passed. The big changes from the last one include the change in the fiscal year, the increase in the capitalization threshold, and the change in the closeout period. These have all been voted on and modified by other, you know, minor resolutions, but we want to basically take everything that we've done, codify it into one policy, and once we approve this at the full board level, we'll get this up on the website to replace the one that's there, and a little bit out of date right now. Any questions or discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. No other business, no chairs report. Items for consent for finance are D. 1, 2, 3, and 4, E. 1, F. 1, and G. 3 and 4. That concludes finance. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we move to policy, I'd like to make a motion that we reopen public participation, suspend the rules and reopen public participation.
We have a second on that.
Can I speak to?
Sure.
There's two components to this. First of all, we had two individuals who wanted to speak to the recorder, the item about the recorder on the agenda, and they arrived, because our public participation went by pretty quickly, they arrived too late to participate. Second is, due to an error that I will take responsibility for, Mr. Doyle read an earlier version of the proclamation, and he was unaware of some of the changes to it, and I would like to ask this board's indulgence to let him speak again, because he was speaking to a version that is not the version that's there, and he has different feelings about.
Okay. We need a vote to suspend the rules. Do we need roll call on that? To suspend the rules? I think, no? All right, all in favor to suspend the rules? Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. I need, with the two gentle, are you both going to speak to this issue, or just one of you? Just you, sir? All right, when you're finished, would you please provide us with a slip paper from the item, so that we have your name and everything? Just hand it to the gentleman on the end, and then you can have a seat there, and then I'll ask Mr. Doyle to take a seat after this, and then we'll go back to some.
Is this the hot seat right here?
Yeah, that's the hot seat, sir. You got it. And hit the button in the middle of your microphone there, on the bottom, and you're all set. Go right ahead. Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Ted Harkey. Josh Harkey's dad is.
Your dad's cousin.
My dad's first cousin.
Yes.
So nepotism, huh?
Yeah. I grew up in rural Totopolis, and Josh grew up in rural Dietrich. We lived 10 miles apart, 15 maybe. And I probably haven't seen Josh since high school.
College.
We did see each other once in college.
You may not remember that.
Okay. I'm the owner of Harkey Engineering and Surveying. My office is in Ogden, Illinois. I'm the past president of the Illinois Professional Land Surveyors Association. I'd like to thank that I'm, speak on the behalf of a lot of surveyors tonight. I have eight employees at my office in Ogden, and I plan to grow my business and stay around this area for a very, very long time. I want to speak about the county recorder's office. There's, I understand there's some discussion about combining the recorder's office with the county clerk's office, and that got my attention, and I wanted to share you with, share with you my concerns. I feel that, I feel that we need a dedicated recorder who knows the Illinois statutes in regards to land records. I think a specialist, a person that's independent and does that specific job, and knows the details of that job, is important. It's important to me. I think it's, it's always helpful to see well-trained individuals who know how to help the common citizen find the recorder documents affecting their property. People's property is the most valuable thing they own, and I don't want that to be lessened by going to a group or an office that it's, it's not their most important duty and their most important job. Even though surveyors, most of us, we typically know where to find things, because we've been in that, in that office many times, but we also sometimes need help finding surveys from time to time. We always appreciate the assistance that we've received. I feel as though this office and its current staff does run their project, their, their office very efficiently, and I'm not aware of any instances of any failings. The recorder, some of the details of things that they need to know is details about the plat act. If you don't have a dedicated recorder that's well-trained, and it's, knows their job thoroughly, and down to every last detail, you could run across the instance where you could have a, a survey plat, or a subdivision plat, recorded, and it doesn't meet all the minimum standards per the Illinois statute. I think the recorder's office, that dedicated person knows what to look for and can see problems with the plat that's not up to par and hasn't made it through, and meet the standards it has to have for selling off lots and lot sizes and easements and the right signatures for the right approvals. There's another item, too, is when you don't have a surveyor involved, and someone wants to create a new piece of land, you may have someone who tries to record a deed, and if it is handed to a regular clerical person that works in the clerk's office, and they haven't been through the detailed training, and they, and they have a lot on their plate to, to learn and take care of with their other duties, you could possibly have a deed recorded, which is a inappropriate deed, which is creating a new tract of land, or something like that. Okay? When those deeds show up, and it's creating this new piece of land, the recorder's office usually finds out very quickly what's going on by pulling out another document, which, which is called a plat act affidavit. The plat act affidavit is this thing that you sign, and you say that this property already exists, or this is part of a, the exemptions from the plat act, where they are vacating right-of-way, or the sale of railroad lands, and there's, there's a group of exemptions that can take care of that thing, and, and allow you to record that new deed with a new, create a new parcel. Those are the things I'm worried about, that concern me, that I'd like for you all to, to learn and just be aware of, and just proceed cautiously with your plans to try to run the county more efficiently, try to save a little bit of money. I'm sorry, I've got five minutes.
Mr. Harkey, thank you. Your five minutes are up. We appreciate.
I think I'm through.
What's that?
I, I think I've.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me speak out of order tonight. I appreciate it very much.
Other gentleman, have you filled out a slip yet?
Yes, sir.
You have it? Okay, great. What's his name? Mr. Roger Meyer.
My name is Roger Meyer. I live just outside the county over at Potomac. I'm a land surveyor, professional engineer. I've spent numerous hours in the recorder's office during research in this county and various other counties. There's two things, well, many things, that made this country great, when it was founded 11 score and eight years ago. One of those is the Bill of Rights, that we have ineligible rights as citizens of this country, and that's still unique to this country. The other thing was the opportunity for the common man, the common man on the street, to own his own property. The recorder of the deeds keeps these records and makes these records available to the public. Unfortunately, not all public records ended up in the recorder's office. There are already public records that are scattered around in the circuit court's office that takes a lot of research to find. By keeping the recorder's office open, we make those records readily available to whoever needs those records. And I'm afraid that if we do anything different than what we are doing right now, that those records will be more difficult for the common person to have access to. And that's going to lose more of our basic rights when we lose access to the public land records. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doyle, do you want to speak to the resolution, please? Thank you.
I'm very upset, and I haven't had much time to prepare my remarks, so they may be not well organized. The thing that I read to you earlier was what I'd received by email. I received no other communication that anything had been changed on that. I just read what was actually before you, out in the hallway. I don't care whether you pass it or not. You might as well pass it, but it's a meaningless thing. One thing that was, well, first of all, well, it's just meaningless. I mean, it's harmless, but meaningless. I'm just, I'm just terribly angry with this board, and with its majority party. You talk about and act as if you support gay people, but you don't. And you did this to me two years ago, and you're doing it again, and I don't like you. Period. So I don't even think I'll stay. I don't know. Maybe I'll stay and just listen. But you carry on, and we want our votes, depend on us, but when someone asks you for something, you think of any possible excuse, whether frivolous or otherwise, to deny You do issue proclamations. You do recognize other minority groups. And I think we are entitled to equal recognition. And I say this to the public, to, to the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered voters of this county, and all our supporters who support gay rights, think again about who you're voting for this coming November. Thank you for your time.
All right, let's, there was nobody else that I can see. We'll go back to open session. Barry, would you please take the hot seat, if you want to call it that?
Good evening. Let me pull up my agenda here. We're going to start out with a couple of appointments, the first of which is for the Sangamon Valley Public Water District. Mr. Chair, what is, oh, for a, for a term to run June 1st, 2014, through May 3rd, May 31st, 2019. Mr. Chair, your nominee?
Robert Guthrie is my nominee, seconded by Mr. Maxwell.
Thank, yes, seconded by Mr. Maxwell. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Chair?
No, it's just, Mr. Guthrie is qualified for this position.
Are there any comments or discussion with regard to that? Ms. Petrie?
Just to double check, and I neglected to check this before I came this evening. I didn't remember that water district terms are five years.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Pat.
Could somebody just remind me of that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
This is for a five-year term, and I did not remember the terms being five years. I thought they were three-year terms. Could somebody?
I was given a five-year term appointment, so I assumed it was correct.
Can we, can we correct that by the full board meeting? Because we'll vote again on it at the full board.
At the full board.
So we can correct the term if it's, if it's incorrect.
Yeah. All right, check that. Okay, you'll check that for us.
We believe it is five years, though, Pat.
Yes.
So it's unusual.
Okay. I just, one day I'll switch.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you, Pat. That passes. Next on the agenda, we have an appointment to the Urbana-Champaign sanitary dis- Next on the agenda, we have an appointment to the Urbana Champagne Sanitary District for one term going from June 1st, 2014 to May 31st, 2017. Mr. Chair.
Diana Lenick is my reappointment to that position.
Second by Jeff Kibler. Do you need to speak to that?
No, I, I spoke with her, spent an hour with her concern, her concerns. She's been a longtime board member and quite efficient in, in her duties and has tremendous expertise in this area, so I'm reappointing her.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Next, we'll move to the County Clerk section. Can I have a motion to accept and place on file the April 2014 report from the County Clerk? Moved by Mr. James, second by Mr. Harper. Discussion or questions for Gordy? And Gordy, you might as well come on up to the seat because next thing, you might have some questions too. No questions? Okay, all those in favor accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Next, we have a request to send the Executive Secretary position to the Job Content Evaluation Committee for review and recommend, and recommendation regarding position responsibility changes. That information was in the packet. Can I have a motion so we can go forward? Mr. Kibler, second by Mr. McGuire. Gordy, you want to give your two cents on this?
Sure, thanks. When I took office in 2011, there was a position in our office titled Secretary. Shortly after I took office, we brought that position to you and asked for it to be reevaluated with an updated, updated job description and a new title, and it was reclassified to an executive assistant title and job description shortly after I took office. In reality, that position's primary responsibility has been, since before I came into the office and for the full three and a half years I've been there, the training and development of training materials for our election judges. That position is now vacant. The executive assistant left my office in early March, and with the vacancy, we wanted to update the title and the position description to more closely reflect the reality of what that position has been for a while. So this would take the existing executive assistant position. The title that we would prefer for it would be Director of Training. The position would have responsibility for election judge training, deputy registrar training, election workers, early voting judges, development of training materials for all of the same, and then training of our staff. And we feel that the updated job description more closely matches the reality of how that position has functioned for the last three and a half years, and then the title is more appropriate to the duties.
Okay, questions? Ms. Michaels?
Do you anticipate that to be an increase or a decrease to your salary line?
I don't know. That's a decision that will be made by you based on the recommendation that comes from the Job Content Evaluation Committee. So I think the process is you send this to the Job Content Evaluation Committee, they review the job description, meet with me, talk about what concerns or thoughts they might have, and then they come back to you with a recommendation for whether or not to accept those changes and where to slot that position in terms of salary.
I have a follow-up question. And this is in regards to several of the reevaluations. It seems like we've had a lot of these from a lot of different departments, and I wondered if there was a timeframe where positions are looked at, maybe when contracts are renegotiated or something like that? Or do we just kind of catch them as they come along?
Can I, can I field this first, and then we'll let Deb talk more? I, I think you, the trend that you are seeing is that when jobs, for the most part, when jobs become vacant, that's when we're most likely to see that because then it's not as much of an impact on a, on an incumbent employee. That's not always the case. I know we've done some with the State's Attorney's Office that while people were there, but I think that is the, the trend that we are observing. I, I feel like it would be harder to do that potentially while incumbents are in the position. Now, maybe not in this case if that's what the job's been the whole time, but now Deb, I'll let you have your shot at that.
I, I, I think you will frequently see these kinds of requests, just as, as James said, when there are vacancies and there's an opportunity to generate greater efficiency in the operation of the office. And I'm really not sure I understand the statement that you've seen so many of these because there have been very few of these in the last year or two. I mean, this committee hasn't even met in the last four or five months.
May I? It, I'm sorry. I just know that when we have our packets at least once a month or every month or something, it seemed like departments are finding either more efficiencies. I'm not saying it's good or bad. What I'm just noticing is there are many adjustments or reevaluations of different positions of, of different departments. And so I wondered maybe during budget time that those are looked at and make adjustments or something like that instead of having them come just when people leave. It wasn't a, it was just an inquiry.
Part of, part of the budget process is that departments who have existing positions that feel that they should be realigned should consider doing it. And the way your rule, the way the personnel policy works, positions that are realigned during the year, typically the, the, if, if an existing position is reclassified, that would not take effect until the beginning of the next fiscal year. But this is, this is a different situation where you're actually creating a new position.
Right.
A replacement position.
Right, this is not a net add of one position to the office.
Important distinction.
Yes.
As a person who minds headcounts a lot. Mr. Langenheim, you had your hand up, you're passing? Okay, Ms. Petry?
A background history question to you. This is the second time you are having this reevaluated. Is there a reason when it was done the first time it wasn't evaluated under this criteria that you've laid out for us?
Because I hadn't been in office long enough to understand exactly what I wanted to do with it.
Okay, fair question.
All right, did he, any further questions? He passed, yes. In that case, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That passes, well, that just goes to the committee, right? We don't have to send it to the full board. Okay, moving right along, we are moving into the County Administrator section, and first of all, I'd like a motion to accept and place on file the April Administrative Services Report. Mr. Rosales has moved, Mr. Kurtz has seconded. Any questions for Deb? Anything you want to point out, Deb? No questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Passed unanimously. Next up, we have another evaluation and review for the HR Generalist and Executive Assistant to the County Administrator positions, and we will send those to the Job Content Evaluation Committee. Can I have a motion? Mr. James? Second, Mr. Kibler. Deb, would you give an overview of these, please?
Yeah, we have had a Human Resource Generalist position since 2008, and the individual who was hired to fill that position in 2008 left for an opportunity with the university on May 2nd. When the position was created in 2008, we maintained separation of some HR responsibilities, leaving anything related with salary administration with the position that is now the Executive Assistant to the County Administrator. This sometimes leads to confusion for departments and officials about if I have an HR question, who do I go to? If it's salaries, I go to this one. If it's work comp, I go to this one. And the Human Resource Generalist position could have absorbed additional responsibility. So I am recommending that we realign these two positions and take all the salary administration responsibilities or HR-related functions that are currently assigned to the Executive Assistant to the County Administrator and assign those responsibilities to the HR Generalist position. And that's effectively, and then reevaluate the Executive Assistant position in light of the changes in responsibility that it will, it would have.
All right. I see none? So all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay? Okay, that also goes off to the Job Content Evaluation Committee. Moving on to other business, and I don't know that we have to take action on this tonight. We have until August, so this might have, this maybe should have said for discussion only at this point, but can we have a discussion without a motion on the floor? Okay, so we're going to have a discussion. You saw in, in the packet, information on the potential for putting the elimination of the elected office of Recorder of Deeds on the ballot in a similar fashion to the Auditor's Office being on the ballot a couple of years ago. And so I would like to hear from people as to how they feel about this possibility. Mr. James?
Well, after hearing the comments I've heard and some of the emails I've gotten, and after looking at the issue, we all know that our department heads from time to time have said how busy they are, or how swamped they are, or understaffed they may have been at one time or another. Basically, this department here, we hear very little complaints about it. It's, uh, does its job. It's one of the revenue makers for the county by all means. And irregardless of who's in there, I think there'll be a person that would, should be and would be qualified. I think we ought to keep it. I think that the old saying in my book is if it isn't broke, you don't go out and try to fix it or realign it. Several years ago, there was discussion on several offices that were wanting to be eliminated or combined or what have you. I don't see that much of a cost savings. I think that if we combine some of these offices, in time, the person that we combine them with are going to say, well, jeez, I got more duties. I think I need more pay. And then you have the transition of staff, and then if there's, if it does go to the clerk's office, in my mind, if there's an election that really needs a lot of attention and time and things are falling apart due to whatever reasons, those resources are going to be pulled to look at that, so we're going to hurt the Recorder's Office. So I think as it stands, in my mind, and from what I see and what little I know of their duties, I say keep it as it is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take this opportunity to discuss the importance of county government to the owners of real property in Champagne County. By real property, I mean the home that someone owns, privately held undeveloped land and farmland, and privately owned commercial building and land. Real property owners need three things from government. More particularly, they need law enforcement, including the sheriff's office and the court system to protect it.
Mr. Maxwell, are you going to speak to the question of the recorder?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
I am. The, the property owners also need access through the road systems, county, township, and municipal. But finally, the third leg of that stool is they need records. And they need the chain of title, and those records need to be preserved. And I submit, without these three functions being in place, the real property ownership would revert to chaos and disorder. Therefore, I must stress the importance of recording function of county government and the need for responsible and accountable personnel to record and preserve these vital records. I have practiced land surveying in Illinois for 43 years. I have researched records for clients in eastern Illinois counties from Wallbase in the south to Iroquois on the north and including Champagne and Vermillion Counties. I researched in counties with combined clerk and recorder's offices and counties with standalone recorders offices. Some counties do a wonderful job, while others come woefully, up woefully short. In general, I found the quality of the record-keeping depends upon how fastidious the office holder is and if the office holder understands the importance of these records. It is also very important to have trained and experienced personnel maintaining these records. We are fortunate in Champagne County to have a very good recorder as well as a county clerk who is capable of working in a combined office setting. I believe in smaller, efficient, accountable gov, and accountable government. We currently have a small, efficient, and accountable recorder office, county recorder office. I favor retaining the office as structured. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and then I'll have Mr. Jay.
I'd also just, just speak to support the Recorder's Office simply because my day job, it's efficiency and making sure that it's correct, so I, I would highly support that.
Mr. Jay?
Unlike Mr. Maxwell, I'm not a, a registered engineer or surveyor, but I've been surveying this county and central, central part of this county for 57 years from a tractor seat. And it's vitally important to those of us, not only in the county, but all of us. My main concern is, is what's been brought up before us tonight, and I thank these folks for coming. I've received more calls on this issue than I have on any other issue in a long time. And I, I didn't ask them all, but I'm assuming they all were surveyors because they act like they knew what they was talking about. But they said to me, in essence, why would you want to fix something that's not broke? And, and some of them were multi-county, and I think most of them probably do multi-counties, and they all indicated to me that they thought that we had the best of the bunch. And so I, I've just, I'm very hesitant to tear down something that's, that may be a gem in a, in a cloud of dust out there in the country.
Thank you. Mr. Richards?
The Democratic Caucus didn't really come to a consensus on this, and I'm not going to weigh in one way or the other on what we're going to do. I just want to say that if we do put this on the ballot and if we do merge these offices, we need to make sure that we have a lot of safeguards because this is one of these offices which is not that important for a lot of people until it is. Because of financial securitization of mortgages and the MERS system the last few years, Recorder's Offices have become the front line in mortgage fraud. There has been an epidemic in Illinois and around the country of, of mortgage fraud. I know our recorder has been working with the Attorney General to fight that in Illinois. There have been unbelievably just a number of cases of banks who couldn't even prove that they had the paperwork to say they own a house, who theoretically, theoretically possibly about six transactions ago bought your papers from the people you originally had your mortgage with, foreclosing on houses, sometimes around the country, for, on people who were completely up to, to date, as anybody knows, with, with their, their credit issues. People see things all the time with their credit issues. That's a really big deal for, for mortgages. Recorder's Offices have been at the front line in, in stopping these things, and so we need to make sure if we, we do merge this, that these kind of things remain a top priority with the combined office.
Thank you.
Well, I've had minimal experience, but I have had experience in dealing with matters of surveying. The important thing is we have here is an incumbent elected official who's been there since before I came into this community, who's dedicated to the job and who's acquainted with the contents of the files and all of that. She is leaving that position, and we are going to have to replace it. That particular office, I do not believe should be subject to the insecurities of being an elected office. The person that really does the job is the clerk that's taking care of those files. That's the person who learns their way around the file, the peculiarities of the system, the deficiencies of the system, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I do believe that there's no reason why the clerk should not be the officer in charge. The same problems will exist with whomever we elect to succeed the present registrar of deeds. So I, I think that this is probably a good thing to do. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. McGuire, did you want to speak?
Sure, thank you. Actually, you know, having a vote on this office, I'm against, you know, merging the Recorder's Office, and I, I think part of it is so that we maintain an opportunity for the voters to determine who the recorder actually is because I think it is an important office. And, you know, giving it to the, to the clerk's office, which is, you know, we have a great clerk now, but that clerk can change. And then the issue with that for me is the Recorder's Office is part of the clerk's office and may not have the focus that it currently has. I'm moving about two blocks away right now. There's two title insurances that you have to have, one by the bank, one by the homeowner, both of them about $500 apiece. So. So obviously, anything that happens with any of those documents, like Mr. Richards said, can be a major issue for any homeowner. The records that they have there go back hundreds of years of what happened in this county. I think that the voters themselves deserve to have someone that they can hold accountable if there's a problem with that office. The other part of this is, there's a lot more people buying homes in this county right now, and that office needs to be maintained, and we need to maintain the service that they have, so that those transactions can happen as quickly as possible to encourage the economy right now, as it's starting to maybe move forward in the county. If it becomes second fiddled in what is the processes or responsibilities of clerk's office, that won't be the focus of the recorder's office. So, you know, I'd say voters make mistakes. I don't think they do. But if the wrong thing happens, and we have a mess on our hands, it's going to be awful hard to fix it.
Ms. Brookeson.
We're just discussing putting this up to the voters, so if voters don't make mistakes, perhaps we should let them decide.
Mr. Alex.
I guess of the comments I've heard, I'm sort of most in agreement with Mr. Langenheim's. Clearly, the function of the recorder's office is essential, and I've heard nothing but good things about the service that people are getting from that office, the efficiency of that office, and quite frankly, the effectiveness of the current incumbent recorder, who I think does a terrific job. So I think it's important to keep in mind that the issue here is not whether there should be recorder's office. I think there needs to be recorder's office. The issue here is whether you need a specific dedicated public official overseeing that office, or whether one official can oversee what essentially would be the recorder's office and the clerk's office. So I'm still willing to keep an open mind on this. I mean, I would not be inclined to support this if I felt that it was going to lead to a reduction in the quality of service of the recorder's office. So I think that's what we need to focus on as we discuss this going forward, whether this is something we want to let the voters decide, is, you know, is this essentially eliminating an elected official's position of an official who is going to be retiring, who would be retiring before this took place anyway? Or is this, you know, some fundamental change to the structure of the office? So I would be, I think I could support the idea of consolidating the elected offices as long as the function and operation of the office itself, the recorder's office itself, remains substantially the same.
Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you. Well, I've been hearing both sides of the issue, and there are good points on both sides. I think Chris has a good point. I think Mr. Langenheim has a good point. I think Gary, and I think that gentleman of public participation has a good point as well. I think we need a lot of discussion and more input on this. I'd like to see Bob Frasca, perhaps next time around at the next COW, since this is just for discussion tonight, to come forward to us, answer some questions, maybe give us a little bit more insight into what she feels. I know she's already stated that she feels she wants to keep the position, but she is leaving the position, and it does, you know, beg the question, who's going to run for that position? Is it just a political office that someone's going to want to grab for the dollars, or is it someone who has experience in that area? I think we have to discuss those issues as well, and I think having Ms. Frasca come over and talk to us at the next COW would be helpful.
Mr. Jay. Actually, Patsy hasn't spoken yet on this. Do you mind if I let her go? Go ahead, Patsy.
Thank you. I'm pleased that we're turning this more toward what is the efficacy of merging offices in relationship to customer service and efficiency, and not think about this as who will run the office. That will change. It will change whether it's elected or it's a hired person. I think that we kid ourselves if, over a five-year period, we are really saving any money. So I don't think that should be part of our decision. Our decision needs to be based on, does such a move on the part of the voters advising us that this is what they would like to see us decide to do, really, truly improve what we offer the citizens and as taxpayers of this county? So I hope the policy chair will allow us to have some further discussion on this, and I know I then will have enough time to call some of these other counties that have recently merged to get a sense of how they feel it's going, and what was the thinking behind driving them to make this decision? So I do hope you'll put it on the agenda a couple more times. Thank you.
At least one more time, Patsy. Mr. Jay.
Very quickly, I just wanted to make a point. Just because Barb's leaving, Barb is an outstanding employee, without question, but it doesn't mean that we can't get somebody else equally as good.
Mr. Rosales.
Well, I would tend to support the idea of, to put it on the ballot. I think that when the discussion was with the auditor, I was one of those that was advocating towards letting the voters decide. And I think this is a political position that the community has, which is input towards the political process, but I'm all for smaller government, and I would love to see the population of Champaign County vote on this decision. I don't think it's really up to us. We don't supervise that position. We don't evaluate that position. This is an elected official that is basically out of the population and the general public. It's not a qualification type of position, so I don't think the effects of what the excellent staff is doing in that office, it will have any effect of it. I think whoever supervises or manages it, it's their vision. But I think that as a user of that office, and I know my wife is often and constantly in that office, I think it needs to be automated. I think it needs to be updated, and I think that to make it more user-friendly, we have large volumes of information that I think could be condensed, and it could be basically more user-accessible online than actually looking through these documents. And I would love to see the population vote on this position, and not so much the board's decision. I think it's our obligation to bring out the information so that viewers could have a decision and a choice. I don't think it's totally up to us. I think it's our responsibility to make sure that all the questions get answered, so that the public can make a sound decision comes November.
Mr. McGuire, second time.
Sure. Just kind of to Patsy's statement, so we have apples-to-apples comparisons, and, you know, how long the other counties might have had, you know, recorder's office as part of clerk's office, the size and number of transactions. I understand that Champaign, with the university, has a lot more transactions and those types of things. So if there's some kind of information that we might be able to have to look at, to see if, you know, the other counties that are comparable, that we're comparing to are the same, there are apples-and-oranges comparisons, I'd like to have that information available.
Thank you. Seeing that, I don't see any hands up, I'm going to take my turn at this point. I am supportive of giving the voters an opportunity to weigh in on this, and I will tell you that I was not a person who thought we should get rid of the auditor. I thought it had a very clear role, but I supported putting it on the ballot, because I thought it was something that could be, the discourse in the public would be valuable in that, and we would probably get to the right decision. I only support this with the expectation that the professional staff that are a part of the recorder's office now would be a part of the combined office with the clerk. A clerk's office already maintains very significant, important records regarding identity, your marriage, your birth, so forth. I trust the clerk's office to maintain those. I don't see that they would have any less interest in maintaining property records. And I kind of treat people more valuable than property, although some people may feel otherwise. So identity is very important to me. I think this is the time to do this. I think this is the time to ask the voters to do it, because it's not about Barb's performance, and I have no qualms about Barb's performance, but I will remind you all that she's been here a couple times asking for more staff, that she does not have enough staff to maintain, keep up during peak season, and it's only getting worse, because the economy is improving and houses are selling. You know, that's an upward hill right now, and the reality of the situation is, the clerk's office has peaks and valleys too, and they're not exactly at the same time. So the clerk's office might have capacity where people could help out in the recorder's side when they're busy, and the recorder's side could help out with the clerk's side when there's election on. I don't know exactly how that plays out. I do know that if we put it on the ballot, there will be a discussion about it in the public, and we'll hear all sides of it, and we'll hear all kinds of opinions on it. So I'm still interested in seeing it be on the ballot, but I do totally hear the concerns about the professional function of that office. The role of recording does not go away if we don't have an elected recorder. We'll have to have those professionals that are there now that are doing such a great job, will have to be at the, will be part of the clerk's operation, and they may have to have, the clerk's office may have to have a senior staff member that's more focused on property law and such, as was brought up, but I think it could be done. I'm willing to let the voters say whether or not it should be done. I'm not quite done yet. I'll get to you, Aaron, don't worry. And I will thank Ralph again, this is probably the third time tonight, I've had to thank Ralph for saying something that I would have said, and that is that, if you're concerned about the quality of the performance of an office, you want it to be run by a professional rather than an elected official. Is that saying that all elected officials are bad? No, clearly they're not. Clearly, they're not. But you don't, it's a popularity contest. It's not a skill contest. And so sometimes you get what you get. And so I think that the stability of what we have there currently would be better served by it having a professional manager that reports to the clerk over time than by having an elected official that might be there for four years and then run for state rep, for example, or something else. Because I'll remind everyone, I think Naomi Chakeson did a fine job as recorder, but that wasn't the end job that she was looking for as far as politics went. So, Ms. Resri, I will hand off to you.
Thank you. I guess, I don't know, maybe, I don't think this is out of line, maybe to kind of put him on the spot, but we have the current clerk here. Granted, he may change, but didn't know if he had any, I know in the paper, you didn't make any comments at this point in time, but maybe specifically on the lines of the peaks and valleys of the workload, do you have any thoughts on that at this point in time, as to how they do or don't flow from your standpoint?
It's a great question, and to be perfectly honest with you, I've not studied it. This isn't something that our office is advocating for. We're about three levels removed from the decision-making on this process. It's first-year decision to ask the voters, and then it's the voter's decision. I do know that, and as you're well aware, our office can be seasonal. We have two elections in the spring, in odd years, and an election in the spring and an election in the fall. Our property tax cycle is very seasonal, and our vital staff is very seasonal. We issue more birth certificates, or marriage licenses, or marriage records, depending on what months of the year there are. So we're used to that ebb and flow, and we're used to having folks from one department cover another department, as demand sort of dictates it. But as to how well that dovetails with the recorder's office, I've not studied it. I don't, you know, we don't have a detailed plan for transition. That would be putting the cart way before the horse. If you decide to move forward with this, and the voters decide to move forward with this, we'd have two years to figure out the transition. And of course, the professional folks who do the job wouldn't be going away. The recorder staff would still be the recorder staff, and we would have to rely, to an enormous degree, on their expertise and their experience, and Barb Frasca's expertise and experience. I said in the paper, I think she's the best recorder in the state of Illinois, and I stand by that, so.
Anybody else want to ask Gordy a question while he's here?
So if there was a conflict, and the resources weren't there for the staff, where would the priority lie if there's an election going on?
Well, we would plan around conflicts. For example, when we have presidential elections, we come to you months ahead of time as part of the budget process, and say, we know we're going to need more help. And we ask for you to budget additional personnel dollars, so that we can hire temporary employees and get them trained and up to snuff, so that we can handle the extraordinary voter load of a presidential election every four years. So we would plan on it. We would work around it, and we would accommodate it.
And wasn't that just the statement of the chair, I mean, ago, that Barb didn't have enough staff, and she asked for more staff, and we didn't provide them? But that was her priority, and she tries to take care of her priority, which is recorder's office, and you would have dual responsibilities. But we didn't provide that.
We all have multiple responsibilities. We already have significant real estate-related responsibilities in our office. We deal with property tax extensions, and redemptions, and mobile home taxes, and we're an integral part of the property tax cycle in Champaign County. We deal with a number of other, hundreds of thousands of other vital records, going back to the 19th century. And again, I'm not advocating for this, but, you know, a two-year period to work with you, to work with the community of surveyors and engineers, to plan for a transition, I don't think anybody anticipates that if the voters approve this, that the plan would just be to blow everything up and start over from scratch, so.
Mr. Kurtz.
Thank you, Gordy. You already have some trained people in that area. When you're slow and they're not, would you be able, I'm assuming that you would already have planned to do, I'm not saying it's going to happen, cross-training? Have someone from your office be able to move into the recorder's office to help them at a peak-load time, and vice versa, if necessary?
Everyone in our office cross-trains in the other departments in our office. I don't anticipate, if we assume the recorder's function, that that would be any different. Our recorders, our elections, vital records, and property tax staff would cross-train on the recording section, and we would ask the recording folks to be aware of the other functions of the office, so that we can all cover for each other.
Okay, seeing no further hands up, here's what I'm going to suggest we do. If you have information, I heard several people talk about information they'd like to know for further discussion, please send me or Deb a note as to further information that would help you turn over this issue and render an opinion. I think that, I think it would be in order to ask Ms. Frasca to come talk to us the next time we discuss this. That's totally a reasonable idea. So please send me or Deb a note if you have ideas. I think, Mr. McGuire, you talked about comparable counties and their volume. I think that's a valuable thing to know about. Patsy has been asking about, you know, a more, maybe a more refined idea of what the costs are now and what the savings might be, even though it may not be a financial decision that we're making here. And so when we have those questions and those answers, and Ms. Frasca able to attend, we will pick this up again. Our deadline is August, if we intend to do that, is that correct? So by the August full board meeting, we would have to have a motion or a resolution to put it on the ballot. So we have time to chat about this, and if the consensus of the board is, no, we don't, and I'll say it this way, we don't want to give the voters the opportunity to weigh in on this, because that's what our role is in this, then we will drop it. that's what our role is in this, then we will drop it. I would hesitate to be in a position where I said I don't want the voters' input on it, but. So, moving, oh, I was just closing off debate there, Mr. Jay.
I guess so.
I think, I don't, as I sit here and listen to you all, I think we need to be careful. We're not talking about taxes. We're talking about real estate, and they're completely different animals. So, it isn't like Gordy's people's going to automatically know what to do over here, or vice versa. It's really a completely different venue, and I don't think it's going to blend together quite as nice as some of you might think that it will.
Mr. Maxwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I may, I hope Deb can help me with this. Is this one of the offices that can by petition be changed so that it would not have to be done by county board action? It could be done by petition?
Oh, yes, I believe that's accurate.
So, in other words, if the voters really wanted to do it, they could do it now. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along, the next item on the agenda, we didn't have a thing to vote on there, so we will come back to that in a further discussion. So, D2 is hopefully the last time in Cal we were going to talk about the current set of county board rules changes. An important detail, and this is what sparked, I think, our confusion at the full board meeting, is that there had been an opinion rendered by Barbara Mann in the state's attorney's office that if we added electronic attendance and chose not to pay per diem for it, that would effectively be reducing the compensation for county board members during their sitting term, which we are not allowed to do. So, that is why the per diem was still in there, even though at one point we had talked about saying, "No, we don't want there to be a per diem for it" in there. And that was what got me confused, and then we spent a lot of time looking at the versions to make sure we had the right ones out there. So, we have the right ones out there. It does say that we are going to pay people for attending by calling in, but everything else is as it has been discussed over the longer term, and I would entertain a motion to approve these rules changes. Mr. Hartke has moved.
Second.
Ms. Petrie has seconded. Now, we are open to discussion. Mr. James?
Roll call.
Second.
There's been a request for a roll call and a second, so there will be a roll call. Mr. McGuire?
I don't understand the decision that's been made, and maybe we're just going to accept it as what it's going to be, because I think it's a big issue whether we pay people that aren't actually at a meeting. If I don't show up for, the argument, maybe the lawyer would explain it differently or better than you did, unfortunately, James, that if I miss a meeting, I'm not going to get paid. If I go to the facilities committee meeting, I don't get paid, even though I discussed the meeting. But somehow, now I have to be paid if I'm not at a meeting and I'm calling in.
Yeah, let me try again. The rule is you can't change an elected official's salary during the time that they're sitting, or compensation, I should say, because per diem is compensation. And the situation is, we're changing the methods by which you can attend the meeting, and we can do that. We've been allowed to do that by state law. But when we say you can attend electronically, but you're not going to get paid for that, that's reducing the compensation for attendance. They're, I mean, they're related, but they're independent. So, as Patsy pointed out in our caucus, we could do this effective December for the board members that are elected in December, but then we'd have a situation where if I attended electronically, I'd get paid because mine couldn't change, and Lorraine, if Lorraine attended electronically, she wouldn't get paid because we've changed, we've appropriately changed her compensation because she's been newly elected. And that sounds way too confusing for me, if you ask me. So, we either pay or we don't do it at this point. Mr. Jay?
Do you have a motion to approve this rule as, right now?
We do have a motion to approve the rules changes, but we don't have any amendments on the floor.
I would like to make an amendment that we just do away with anything that involves video or telephone conferencing.
So, you would like to remove the electronic attendance?
Completely, and there's a couple of areas that's in here, but I just take it completely out.
I think we can go relative that.
Six G.
Six G is the one important thing, I think.
Six G would be the important one, and eighteen, the last sentence in eighteen D, which talks about the pay thing. I would move that.
Okay, we're just going to make sure that we all understand what we're talking about here. So, the second paragraph of, or the last sentence of eighteen D would also be struck. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Mitchell, discussion on removing electronic attendance. Mr. Jay?
Well, I've been opposed to this in the beginning because I really think we're opening up a Pandora's box for, not for very good reason. We have, and actually, I may have missed a meeting a time or two in my life. It wasn't on purpose, but I think we have an obligation to make these meetings when we can, and if we can't make it, it's not the end of the world. It's not like something's not going to get done or happen because John Jay didn't come tonight. I think that what we do or what we're about to do is open up a potential of abuse that's not necessary. And I think the easiest thing and the best thing for us to do is just not to do it at all, and for us to show up when we can, and if you can't show up, you don't have to be upset about it or beat yourself up. I didn't run for county board for several years in the early days when I was asked because I didn't have the time. Now that I'm old and got a little time, and you all have to put up with me, but my point is that it's not, there's nothing wrong with a guy missing a meeting once in a while. So, we're making a big deal out of something that shouldn't be a big deal, in my opinion.
Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Kibler?
So, I think just as much as Mr. Jay is opposed to telecommunications into this meeting, I am very much for the option to do so for a variety of different reasons. One, we are at a new age of technology that allows us to do so in an easy fashion, relatively cheap. In fact, I think we have everything we need in this room to do it today. Secondly, the job market, at least specifically in technology, you do travel quite a bit to New York, to San Francisco, but yet your participation in discussions about agenda items and whatnot, there's still something you're still active in in your caucus and so forth. So, you still are contributing to it, and ultimately, if you have a good thing or two to say about the subject, I think it's good to have that ability to communicate that to the rest of the board that's in attendance. And the final piece, and I completely understand the idea of Pandora's box for abuse, which is why there are three really, there are only three ways that you can actually use the system. That's in the event that you have a family emergency, you yourself are sick, or three, it's for a job. I know that with my family's medical history, last year, I probably would have said bye-bye to all of you anyways and would have foregone this policy because, you know, being with my child was more important than telecommuting in at that point. But there are certain circumstances where it may have been important for me to attend one of those meetings, or it may have been important for the ability to communicate with the rest of the board on issues that were being pressed at the time. So, in terms of the ability to fraud this, I would be first and foremost in favor of repealing it if we started seeing somebody abusing this. I did ask a reliable source, that would be my mother, who is a very reliable source. Happy Mother's Day, Mom, belated. She is an elected official and has been on boards in the past and has used the telecommunications policy, and we discussed, has there been, experienced any fraud or anybody abusing the system? And the answer is no. I mean, at least in that case, they had not. Granted, this is anecdotal evidence. So, I would encourage the board to look at this as an option to expand our abilities to make sure we all have voices, and we all can communicate to the board during board meetings and during committee meetings, and I would encourage you to vote down this particular amendment that removes the telecommunications policy.
I don't see any other hands up. Mr. Alex, there we go.
I can't pass this one up. I have really mixed feelings about this. I'm actually pretty ambivalent about the electronic participation provision. I would be happy with it either way. What I would not be happy about is seeing this entire rules effort go south based on what seems to be a significant amount of principal disagreement over whether electronic participation should be allowed at all, whether electronic participation should generate per diem for some or all members based on the timing, and whether or not electronic participants should be able to vote. So, I'll actually support this because I think that's, it's an issue that I think is important. It's something I think we still need to take up, and hopefully, we can come to consensus on. But my belief is that this effort to do sort of a technical and efficiency rewrite of the county board rules is something that has achieved a lot of consensus among the board members, and this seems to be the sticking point. So, I will support separating this, and I would hope that we would take it up later.
Mr. McGuire?
I too. I've had some difficulty with this, not because of the fraudulent issue. It's because I think people that could bring information to the board that would be important and represent their districts aren't or couldn't be here, like Mr. Carter hasn't been here for months, and he doesn't have a voice here right now because he doesn't have the opportunity, or Jeff's issue. I mean, those are things, reasons where they have no control, they have no, you know, no way to do this. So, it's kind of difficult to make a decision on this issue. The money issue is an important thing, though, that would make it difficult for me to not support the amendment.
Ms. Burksen?
When I look around at this board, I don't see very many people who would attend electronically, and I certainly don't see anyone who would exploit it.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I would support the elimination of the electronic, mainly because we've been elected officials, and I think there's a lot of discussion that goes on in this room amongst us that we just would fail to get, and whether or not the program would be abused, I don't know, but I just think that if you're an elected official, that you need to be present. And I do it. I am on boards and committees that meet tele-electronically, but, you know, I mean, they were set up that way, and the expectations weren't that you needed to be in the room to, you know, to deliver your message. So, I will support the elimination.
Mr. Langenheim?
I just don't think we should be going into electronic attendance at all because you're not in the room. Your body language doesn't come across, there's a whole bunch of stuff, a lot of subliminal communication that doesn't come through on electronics.
All right, Lorraine? Order, order, order.
Let's not televise.
Mr. Chair, where's my gavel?
Not televising tonight.
Where's the gavel?
The gavel is in my office.
Ms. Cowart?
Okay, I'd like to say that I brought it up. Diane is the first one that I know that needed to, couldn't be at the meeting, and called in and did a conference. Lord Carter got sick, and he'd asked me, you know, since we had the new videos set up, you know, whether or not he could call in and participate. But I can go either way, you know, I'd like to see people be able to participate in these meetings if they're not able to come personally. But I think that the big thing here is how do we decide on this here per diem, whether or not, you know, we're going to vote on this. And the per diem part had never came up when I talked to it about with Lord or when Diane talked about it. Nobody was expecting to get paid for not being here. So, I can go either way with this here. It, you know, does make me indifferent, because I try to make every meeting, and if I can't come for some reason, I'm not looking to get paid.
Ms. Michaels?
Ms. Cowart's right. There's a lot of times when I can't get away from work, and the way it was explained to me was that I can be listed as a, almost like in the audience, is that you are there, but, you know, your votes and things don't count, and that's fine. So, if you want to listen into something, that's why we have the videos and things like that, and it is good to hear what's going on, but at the same time, I support not having the teleconference and that. It is hard to get your body language across. It's hard to get your point across. It's hard to get a feeling, or maybe you miss hearing something one way or another. At this point, we're kind of new with some of these other things we're doing, and I just, I think it's nice to phone in, to listen in. You know, maybe you have the opportunity to say something, but honestly, I don't see that happening at our regularly scheduled meetings.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes, as I'm listening to everybody, I will support this amendment, and the reason I will do that is I think this is the cleanest way to separate what's been changed in the bylaws, and I don't want to see the whole package of bylaws go down over this issue, and we can have a continuing conversation on the electronics another time, because I do think everybody who's worked on this has done a nice job of cleaning up the organizational meeting that happens right after the election. So, I would hate to see that get lost in this dialogue, and so if we could separate the two, then this might be the way to do it without calling for a divided question. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm going to share everybody's frustration with the per diem situation. That's not at all what I would have hoped that the opinion would be, and I might disagree with it, but it wouldn't do me any good because I'm not a lawyer. I will vote against this amendment. Me and Mr. Kibler will start the digital age party tomorrow and launch our platform, but I think we can vote on this. And I don't think we all need a roll call for this. So, for the amendment to take out the digital attendance policy, if you vote yes, you want to take it out. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Nay. I, okay, we'll do division. If you wanted to vote aye, please raise your hands. It passes. If you want to raise your hand for nay, go ahead. Okay, stand and be counted. Okay, we still lost. Okay, so, back to the rules, without the digital attendance policy, is there further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call, yes, sorry. We had to prove that, so now we can prove who did or didn't want digital attendance, even though it's not on there anymore.
Rosales?
Yes.
Schrader? Schwartz? Alex? Burksen? Cowart? Esri?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Hartke?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Kibler?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Langenheim?
Yes.
McGuire?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Petrie?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Quisenberry?
Yes, and I believe that was unanimous, which would mean it would be on consent.
Consent agenda.
Oh, my gosh. All right. We're in the home stretch. Now, we got the chair's report, which has two parts, one in the addendum. Let's do number one first, though. I go one and then two. Mr. Kurtz?
Ready.
I think this is an information item. Do we have to vote on this?
No, you can't.
No.
So, I'm going to just do this. After consulting with both chairs of the caucuses, actually, really a long time ago, and having to be reminded as to their answer to be reminded as to their answers, I'm going to ask Stan Harper, Jeff Kibler, Josh Hartke, and Patsy Petrie to join me in reviewing the current strategic plan. We do have to vote for it? So I would like to suggest that there be a motion that those five individuals, Mr. Jay has moved, Mr. Richards is second, and what we're going to do, just so everybody understands, is we're going to take a look at the current strategic plan. We're going to see if it's current, and if there are things on it that aren't current, we will bring those things, this group will bring things back to the board. They will not change the strategic plan. They will facilitate an update to it, is the best way I can describe it. So all those in favor, any discussion on that, please? I didn't think there would be. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you, Mr. Langenheim. That doesn't have to go to the full board, does it? Thank goodness. All right. That passed. Okay. And so now we are on item two, and before we get a motion here, I am, again, going to, first of all, I want to say that in the process of working on this resolution, there were several versions. There was discussion with many people. It is totally my fault that Mr. Doyle read an older version tonight, and I am totally sorry for the situation that put him in, and I am totally sorry that he was not prepared to speak to the eventual resolution that was before you. And I'm going to read that now so that everybody in the public knows what we're talking about. It is a resolution approving the proclamation designating the month of June 2014 as Marriage Fairness Act Awareness Month, whereas marriage of two people forms the base of the family unit and helps build a cohesive and successful society. And whereas the County of Champaign has been issuing marriage licenses to all couples since March of 2014. And whereas on June 2, 2014, the Religious Freedom and Marriage Fairness Act allows marriage licenses to be available equally to all couples in the 102 counties of the state of Illinois. And whereas on June 2, 2014, the Religious Freedom and Marriage Fairness Act allows all couples joined by civil unions may, at no cost for one year, have their unions changed marriages dated from the day of their civil union ceremonies. Now, therefore, it is resolved by the Champaign County Board that the proclamation designating the month of June 2014 as Marriage Fairness Act Awareness Month in the County of Champaign, Illinois, is hereby approved. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Kurtz has moved this resolution. Do I have a second? Mr. Rosales, I have a second, and if I will, I would like to say a couple more things. I will also say that as Mr. Doyle read the item before, I would have voted yes for that. I had no problem with that. In the spirit of having proclamation, I believe this proclamation is relevant to the business of the county because the county clerk issues marriage license. I thought it was important to bring it in front of us, despite my tendency to not bring proclamations in front of us, and I will continue to be a steward of which ones come through on the basis of their relevance to the business of the county. I will also say that my interest in seeing a proclamation such as this in front of us is to build as much consensus as possible. And to that effect, I have engaged in discussions with several individuals to try to make a proclamation that is, in my opinion, still meaningful and something more people could get behind. And that's what led to the differentiation between what Mr. Doyle read to you and what you see, what was sent to you in email, what we're talking about tonight. So at this point, I would entertain discussion. Mr. Richards?
You've given it a couple shots, but I still am not quite hearing why we made changes from what Mr. Doyle had seen before. I know as a caucus, we talked last month about having a caucus member work with a member of the LGBT community on this, and he doesn't seem very happy with whatever changes we came up with for the final draft. I know last month, we had a couple Democratic caucus members who said they would not vote for the proclamation as presented by the LGBT community, and I'm just wondering how we ended up with a product that the LGBT community doesn't seem to be happy with.
Well, I'll take full responsibility for that in my communication with the authorship on this. I made some changes. I should have made sure that Mr. Doyle was aware of those changes as they went forward. The changes were specifically to make sure that this would pass. And I can tell you that if it was out there as it was read by Mr. Doyle, it would probably fail. And I am not interested in bringing a proclamation to differentiate us in a failure. I don't think that's the spirit of having a proclamation of the county declaring, trying to declare something and saying, no, it shouldn't be considered in that way. Now, I understand other people believe differently about that, but that's the discretion that I'm going to use as the policy chair. I did engage the, my vice chair with policy, Mr. Kibler, in language, being a member of the other caucus. I consulted with Mr. Hartke, who was the original author of what Mr. Doyle read, and I communicated with him as revisions were made. I communicated with some of our caucus members who had expressed that they would not vote for it the way it stood before, and made sure that the new version was acceptable to them. And so frankly, we wouldn't be considering it probably if it was doomed to failure. Did that answer all of your questions, Mr. Richards? I think so. Thank you. Mr. Alex?
I, to be honest, I'm fine with this either way, but I just want to make sure I understand the difference between what was presented in the first go-round of the addendum and what was, how that was later changed. As far as I can tell, the language is identical, except the original was to designate Respect and Celebrate Marriage Equality Month, and the new language is to designate Marriage Fairness Act Awareness Month. Is that correct?
There are three significant changes. You have hit upon one of them, which was the name, and you called that out precisely. The other change is that in two of the wherashes, the specific name of the act was added to the detail, and there was a fifth whereas clause that Mr. Doyle read that was not included in the final version.
Okay, so that's yet a third, that's yet a third version, because the one that I have truly, the one I'm using is the one that was sent out with the original addendum.
That is, the one that you have had that first change of the striking of the whereas in it, it did not have the update with the name changes and the act name being added.
So more has been changed from the text that Mr. Doyle referred to than the name?
Yes.
Where we are now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Burksen? It was the whereas regarding children. It was to the detail of caring for and supporting of children. Mr. James?
I won't be supporting this for many reasons, and some of them being that, to me, it's a special interest-type concern. We've had gun advocates come to our committee years ago, wanting us to reaffirm the Second Amendment right. There's just so many things that go on in our country that a proclamation's a nice thing, it's a nice piece of paper. It shows a group of supportive constituents that we represent. I really haven't talked to my constituents about this. I haven't had the time, other than, like you, seeing the different versions. But I just don't think that that's the type of thing that I want to see always come before this board, is, and I hear the logic, well, it ties in with the county clerk's new duties, but there's a lot of new duties and a lot of new laws, whether it concerns teenagers, seniors, veterans, you know, are we always going to be reading a proclamation so the public's aware? I think we get that in the news and the newspapers. The bottom line for me, like Mr. Doyle said, it's a way to gather some votes if you support it or not voted, and because they're going to look at the voting that's done on this. I don't like to be threatened. I don't care who votes for me, on what side. I represent the people that set me here. It's not for me to say yes or no.
Mr. Kibler?
I plan to vote yes on this for a myriad of different reasons, but first and foremost, this is a significant piece of state legislation that directly impacts the services that our county clerk provides. Therefore, because of the nature of the language, it seems very fitting that this board provides this proclamation to let people know of the specifics of converting your civil union to marriage. So I think it's something that is important to get out to the public, so I will be supporting it.
I too will support this. I do represent a fairly significant contingent of partners and individuals that probably are directly connected with this proposed resolution. That's number one. But more importantly, when I went back and looked at the county's goals and strategic plan, one of the main ones that's listed on the county website is equity. And I think that the bottom line of what this legislation has done is created a more equitable situation for everybody, and that's the important variable to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Patsy. Any other discussion? All those, Lorraine, please.
As Patsy said so good, I too will be voting for this here proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, I'm ready to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Last thing to do is to see what's on the consent agenda. I have A2 and D2, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Oh, we have one more item of business on your addendum. Just a quick recommendation for approval to change the start time of the May 27 county board study session at 6:00 PM. Deb, tell them why, please.
Actually, since this addendum was prepared, we have learned that we would like that meeting to begin at 5:30 PM. We have four shortlisted firms in response to the RFQ for facilities master planning for the sheriff, and in order to try and make sure you're out of here by 10:00 PM that night, we need to start at 5:30 PM.
All right, let me get a motion first, and then you'll have it.
[inaudible].
Go ahead.
Supper? If you want food? We could do that.
All right. Okay, let's change them, I haven't gotten the motion yet, so let's, recommendation for approval to change the start time of May 27 county board study session to 5:30 PM.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move, second, we're adjourned.
[inaudible].
Mm-hmm.